We might as well call it to order.
Um, let's do that. I'll take roll call, starting with Aaron.
Aaron Sullivan.
Oh, Martha Schrod.
Jill Plamper.
Mike Wright. Sheldon Combs.
Allison Iverson.
And Andy Doctoroff first thing on the agenda, then the roll call is the approval of the agenda for tonight, which is before us. Anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Second.
And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, agenda's approved. Next on the agenda, next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from February twenty-sixth, which are before us. Um, I'll take any comments, questions, or a motion.
I'm gonna look at Sheldon, because Sheldon always finds things that we miss.
I didn't read. I got to page two, like you said.
Uh-oh.
Motion to approve minutes as.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Minutes are approved. Um, and then, next item on the agenda is the site plan review for a proposed addition at ten four ninety-five Borgman, and I believe this is up last month as well. So, we're interested to hear what's been done.
Me, I?
Uh, you first.
You first, okay. Um, I'm Michael Morgan. I live at ten four nine five Borgman. Um, so I came before you last month and realized that the plans weren't quite in the condition they needed to be. Uh, so I went back and worked with the architect and we had a lot of back and forth with Hank to make sure we got everything where we thought we could get approval. We are still asking for a slight variance of twenty-six square feet pending the approval of certain bonuses. To get there, pretty much what we did is we pulled the front in. Uh, I had a survey done, uh, and we did realize that the front of the house was into the setback by half a foot. So, um, you know, if I understand the way Hank explained it, the front, the first floor's grandfather, but the second floor couldn't overhang the way it was. So, we pulled that back, which at the same time brought the square footage down. Um, so I think that was a good thing overall. Uh, we added the window, um, on that one side, Joe, that you had mentioned. And then we added some more architectural detail, just little stuff on the ends there to hopefully get the architectural ones that we need. So, I think that's.
Hank, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, basically what we have, the addition qualifies, uh, it's under twenty-six feet, so twenty-four feet. The addition peak is twenty-two five. The front yard in the quarter now conforms because they did pull that back. The side yard, there are no change in existing, as is the rear yard. Um, they are doing a little sun porch back there, but it's not a consequence for lot coverage. They still check in at twenty-seven point seven percent, which is well under what they can count. Uh, the, uh, house size, uh, including all bonuses, we checked out, and I did have this conversation with the architect. At the twenty-two, twenty-one square feet, which is permitted, proposed is twenty-four ninety-six. They need a variance of two hundred and seventy-six square feet unless the planning commission uses discretion and finds that some of the architectural details that were added by Mr. Morgan and the architect qualify, in which case the variance number would, they would pick up the two hundred and fifty square feet on that bonus, character bonus, and drop their need to a twenty-six square foot variance. And that's at the discretion of the planning commission. If you'll see on page two of the report for this, I did put in there, and it says, uh, any combination of three or more, and then it says that the last sense or any other architectural detail, as deemed appropriate by the planning commission. And then we went through some of the details. So, other than that, he occupies the same square footage as what he had, so he's over his own house, um, in the garage in the front. You do have, uh, communication from a neighbor in front of you, um, which we could certainly discuss if you'd like. But other than that, he has made some efforts, and he is looking for you to approve some of the changes he made as architectural details, which would negate a substantial portion of the variance required from his own.
Could you explain, uh, what you think he has done, uh, to avail himself of that bonus?
He did add the window. He did add two different types of siding on the front. He did add, uh, he did use, uh, some different materials in that to create some architectural interest. Whether or not you accept what the plan differential is, and I'm sure that he would be happy to explain in a little bit more detail what exactly he did. But, uh, if that qualifies as architectural detail, he needed three, he had two. So, if you, if you need to accept one of the couple things that he had in order to do that. At that point, you've got twenty-six feet as a, uh, as a variance or two hundred and seventy-six square feet.
Okay. Um, Aaron.
We don't want to hear from the. From me to talk about the architectural.
Oh, sure, I'm sorry.
Um, okay, so I guess for the architectural details that we have, um, all the things that Hank mentioned, um, two of which are on the list. But we also have some decorative, uh, corbels down underneath. Um, so it gives like the illusion of an overhang, but it's actually purely decorative. Uh, and then we have, there's these, um, like right now on the corners of the house, it's just the siding that wraps around, so it doesn't look, you know, especially fancy. But we have, um, the details, you can see there's like white things, so they're gonna give decorative, um, you know, look to the sides of the house. And then on the front, where we have like the faux overhang thing going on again, it actually bumped out a little bit, so it gives the, that kind of like, I don't know. It looks like a chalet type of thing to me, I don't know. I quite hard to describe. You can see what the shake is. So, that gives it some like three D interest. Um, and it also coordinates, because there's gonna be, you know, those, I apologize for not knowing what they're called, but the white things that go down the sides.
Trim?
Um, yeah, trim. I thought there was a fancier word for it, um, that will coordinate, so it kind of brings everything together. Um, you know, and I think that when you think about like what the house looks like now, it's a very basic colonial with very little architectural, um, detail. And, you know, we just kind of looked like where could we possibly add stuff? And so we just went everywhere we could think of doing something architectural, we went with it.
Um. The biggest changes would be that, that might qualify depending on the pleasure of the planning commission would be the shape shingle of the gable feet. Which would be one, the bracketing for the, uh, roof. The roof is a little bit stepped backwards, whereas before it came out as cantilever. Now, the roof just comes out, which it's allowed to do and project. Um, but having said that, those would be the two main details that you have as far as, different than you had the last time, that may qualify for the two hundred and fifty square feet.
Thank you.
So, all right, I, I can go. Um, I'll just ask my question as part of this. When, when I look at this, um, you could have done a few different things with the front of the house over the garage, but you created a false gable, gable applique, I'm not sure what the term is. To me, that's not required by the structure in any way. It seems like a design element. It breaks up the massing in the front. I'm not sure why that doesn't count. You didn't mention it, and I'm not sure why, why that wouldn't count as the third architectural interest item.
It, because it's not specifically listed, so it says, if you take a look at the specifically listed.
No, no, I get that, right. At the pleasure of the planning commission, you list it off.
Exactly. So, you could determine, you, you could actually say, I would make the determination that this counts, and then if there's a consensus vote for the planning commission, then his variance is significantly less, which would give him a higher probability of success if it's a valid appeals.
Okay. And then, just till I understand, um, if he got the two hundred and fifty, he would still need a variance of?
Twenty-six feet.
Of twenty-six feet. Because that must just be a rounding difference.
Well, at that, at that point in time, what the, what the difference would be is basically he's following his footprint. So, it would mean that he would have to step in the second floor, uh, a foot or something like that in order to gain the.
Sorry, I was thinking of a different question, right? So nineteen hundred plus, plus four fifty, plus twenty-one, two seventy-one, okay. Um, all right, so I guess in, in, in my opinion, right, so the mutton bars and the trim are clearly called out.
Right.
I think the gable applique, and I'm not sure what the appropriate term of that is, but the narrower A-frame gable that had been applied to the front of the house has the desired effect of reducing the massing and adding architectural interest. For the small amount of the house that he was actually changing, um, I think he attempted to address the concerns for that section of houses being added. And so I think it's sufficient to meet that standard. Um, I don't, with, with the changes in the windows, I mean, obviously there's existing structure that should, that, that one would love to have windows too. But for the added structure, I don't see any issue with the fenestration or anything else. I, I don't have a problem.
So, this shake that you've called out here, is this cedar shake or is it vinyl shake?
Uh, right now, we're planning on using like a vinyl shake alternative, uh, because it's gonna be that, uh, you know, color coordinated with the existing siding.
Oh, it's not gonna be a different color?
No, it is gonna be a different color, but it's gonna be, I think we're going with like gray, so as opposed to like a traditional cedar brown.
And what's the color of your vinyl siding that you're?
Uh, it's a dark blue, not like a super dark blue, but a blue-gray.
Which is what you already have up on the second floor?
Yeah, yeah, so we're just using the same siding.
Uh, I guess I'm still a little concerned about the massing. Um, having your garage project out so far, and of course, that's not your problem. It's false, and that's the way the house was built since you moved in. But to add to that additional massing in the front in that way, and, and to be an obstructed view for your next door neighbors, that's, that's kind of an issue. And, um, I'm concerned about that.
Yeah, and, uh, I agree with those concerns. I mean, it's something that we thought a lot about. Uh, we thought about going off the back if that was possible. Um, but because of, uh, girder truss in the back, it would have been prohibited. We couldn't do plumbing, um, where we needed to do it. Uh, and our house, you can't, you can't really tell this from the pictures, but our house is set farther back than our neighbors. So, 'cause our garage comes forward and is with the setback line where our neighbors are up to, our house is actually twenty feet farther back than their houses are. So, it, while it does add mass, it only adds mass in line with other houses. So, it's not, it doesn't give the impression that there's this big thing jutting out, because, I'll be honest, that was one thing that we had a lot of concern with. And we spent a lot of time standing in front of our house going, is this actually gonna look good? I mean, we have no interest in doing something that's, you know, not gonna look good or add value to our home.
Just for clarification points, is it, uh, Mr. Morgan's house, the way that it sits? If he had a blank lot, he could build the front of his building line of a new house where the front of his garage is now. So, as far as views and that from neighboring houses, while it's always important to try to consider what impact it might have on the neighborhood, um, if he was to tear the house down and start from scratch, he would be within his rights to put it there.
But the difference between having a gigantic garage door out in front with that versus lots of windows and fenestration is a change in the way the massing would be interpreted. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. Joe?
So, if I'm correct, the window that I asked you to think about is in, on the right side elevation on the lower level, right?
Yes.
Um, the one all the way toward the back?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to make sure I remembered it correctly. And that whole long expanse of wall that we're looking at is partly house and part garage along that right side elevation. Um, like this section of it is house, this section is, you know, you're seeing the garage. Um, and that's all existing, and, and it currently has no windows in it at all?
That's how it is.
That's a total bummer.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, I get that you've got like a big picture window in the front giving light to those areas. And those are bedrooms.
On the top floor, yes.
On the top floor.
I mean, at least on the top floor, every wall has a window.
Mm-hmm. Oh, I get that. What's, what's on the first floor in that section? I'm trying to figure that out.
Um, so I'm actually, I'll be honest, I'm a little bit confused. I thought I understood what you're talking about, but the, the side that doesn't have any windows is the other side of the house, so it doesn't have a garage.
Uh, no, I understand. But you're, but when you look at it from the side, uh, in these plans, you see the house, and then obviously it goes this way, and then you see the garage. But I, I'm just saying, when you're standing there from the side, what you do see is a big expensive wall. And it's the kitchen and the dining room.
Yep.
And there are no windows on that whole side.
Yeah, I think it might have something to do with how close the houses are on that side. There's really not very much room, and it looks right into the side of the neighbor's house. I suspect that's why they did it that way.
I suspect that, that they didn't put windows in because windows are expensive.
Yeah.
Um, that, that would be my guess. Um.
I mean, if it's a matter of putting a window in there, I mean, I don't know how much that costs, and I hope it's not that expensive, but I would consider it.
I don't know how much that costs either. Um, I just. Now, and I, and if I'm understanding correctly, the neighbor that is not happy that we, that's given us is the one that's looking at the left side elevation. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And the, and the, the one on the right side elevation, that the one on the right side isn't complaining?
I have no communication from that neighbor.
Yes, so.
Okay. I just, I just wanna make sure I'm looking at the correct side of the house for what they are asking about. And if I'm understanding you correctly, Hank, um, in putting this addition over the garage, they are bringing the house up, but not in front of where that other house is.
That's, yeah.
I didn't, I didn't understand that question.
So, okay, so if you look at this picture, this is the house that's not happy about this going up. The front of the garage is, is level with, or is on the same plane as the front of this house.
Yeah.
Okay? So, if this house, if, what Hank was saying is that if this house were to have been torn down and rebuilt, he could have started the front of his house in the same plane that this garage did.
At the twenty-five feet.
Right. So, so had he built a whole new house, it would change the view coming out of here no matter what. They just happen to be lucky that the house next door to them has the garage to the front, so that they can actually see farther out.
Okay.
Okay.
So, what was your question?
It's not a question, it's just I'm trying to understand. This, this person is unhappy about what they're going to be looking at, and I'm trying to understand, is it, is it blocking their view simply because it is now becoming taller like a normal house would be if it were situated on the lot properly? Or is it going to be blocking their view because it is actually out farther than it should be compared to the front of their house? And the answer is, they are on, the front of their house and the front of the garage is on the same plane.
Right, if you'd like to call your neighbor to keep a one-story ranch, that you could see out over the top of them.
Yes. That's what, I'm just trying to make sure I'm understanding what this person is asking for and what it actually looks like. That's all, I'm trying to make sure that I'm understanding it properly. And I think I do. So, while I sympathize with the neighbor, um, because it changes what they currently have, um, it doesn't necessarily, it wouldn't be any different, or it's not giving them something more horrid if, um, if you had knocked down the house and built a, built a different one. That's all I'm trying to understand. And their, part of their complaint is that there is, um, that they are looking at nothing but gray siding. And I believe what they are actually talking about then is the side of the garage, which is what they currently look at. Am I right on that, Hank?
That's pretty accurate.
Okay.
This right here is what they're, is blocking them now.
Right, but, but the, but the expanse, but what they talk about is that for a total of a hundred and eighty-nine square feet of blank wall, they're actually talking about this. But that's already there. So.
They're probably referring to all of this.
Well, probably, except that whole thing is not blank wall. You know what I mean? This, and it's all existing. So, I'm just trying to understand the validity of their, I mean, I understand why they're frustrated, I just, um. And, and they're saying that the pic, the, the window, supposedly there was supposed to be a picture attached to this?
Give me the same picture she got last time. Give me the same picture she got last time.
Got it, okay. It, it's saying that even the view from the north-facing windows will be about seventy-five percent block when viewing to the west. Well, again, had he knocked down the house and built a new house, it would have the same problem. Okay. And so, all of the new structure has fenestration in it.
That is correct.
And you've added the corbels as a, as a, a detail. The detail of the, the shake, and what was the third one, the trim?
The corbels and the change in siding would have been different than the other trim, and then you also have the mutton bars, so.
Yeah, mm-hmm.
There was, uh, uh, assuming the planning commission finds those architectural details not immediately listed as acceptable, then he would have probably like five instead of three.
I think my understanding of it is pretty clear. And I don't have any more questions. Actually, I don't think I even asked one, sorry.
Thank you.
Mike, um, thank you for coming back and, uh, and putting some more details in here, and we appreciate it. Uh, I think, you know, I've got the same concern as everybody else. It, that, that garage looks heavy with that top on it now. It's become the focal point of the whole house, and it, I mean, even, you know, looking at the drawing and looking at the, the mock-up photo, it, it's a weird place to put a focal point.
It's already the focal point.
Well, but it doesn't have a top.
But it's, but it's still already the focal point, unfortunately. Sorry, go ahead.
No, no, that's it. I, I, you know, I'm, I'm concerned about it. Um, yeah, the other thing, and this is more of just a, a comment, I, I think it's, uh, a, a huge missed opportunity to do this scope of a project and not change the vinyl siding. To, to continue on with vinyl for this, put a lot of money into this, to keep it a vinyl house is, seems like a bad idea to me. Um, I'd be much more comfortable if it was, you know, a hardy or something along that. Um, I feel like that would potentially leave a, some of these concerns about the people who look at that. That's it, sorry.
I, I have one more, I saw, I'm sorry, I hate to interrupt, but I have one more quick question. On your rendering here, you show around the garage as being actually brick. Is the garage brick?
The bottom half of the house is brick, yes.
The bottom half of the house is brick, the siding is only on the second story?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sheldon?
Yeah, okay, uh, thank you, that was one of the questions I had. Um, I, I noticed that on the plan, the first floor plan, I, I don't see, contrary to the, um, front elevation, I don't see a window in the dining room facing front. Is that, is that an error in the drawing, or is that an error in my reading of the drawing?
Uh, unfortunately, it's how the house was built.
Pardon me?
So, there is no, on the, in the dining room, there is the picture window in the front.
Yeah.
Um, but there are no windows on the side.
I don't see it on the first floor plan.
Because there, there is no window.
No, no, you're saying, you're saying the picture window on the front.
There is a window, it was not drawn on the plan, it was drawn on the elevation, but the window does exist.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I get it, there's still no window shown on the.
Sorry, I did not realize that.
I have, other than that, the same reservations that have already been expressed by other members in terms of whether or not the, um, the right side neighbors come in. It's a, and I realize it's existing, um, but that's an awfully long span of wall to look at. Other than that, I, I mean, I, I don't have a problem identifying the additional changes that you made. And I do appreciate the effort that's gone in, and the fact that you and your architect spend some time with Hank. Um, that speaks well, and I appreciate the effort that went in. Uh, we still have to deal with the variance issue. Um, and, and I would have been happy if we'd been able to squeeze another twenty-five feet out of it. I don't have a problem with the extra two hundred and fifty-foot bonus. Uh, I think you're, I think you've made substantial efforts in that direction. And from the point of view of appearance of the front of the house, I don't have any issues. I do have the other concerns that have been expressed with respect to the vinyl siding and, and that sort of stuff. That's what I got.
Alfie?
So, I drove by your house today. I was actually kind of surprised that the brick, it, it isn't as noticeable. When you're looking at it on the plans, it looks like one big wall of nothing, but, um, it's kind of hidden by the other house, the garage on the, um, right side of your home. Um, and the landscape that you have there, so I was kind of surprised by that. Um, I was initially concerned about the massing, but when I drove by, I looked at, um, the house beside it, even though it is a smaller house square footage, it is a pretty substantial. Yes, house, so, um, and the fact that that part coming out is the only thing that's going to be, I mean, it's set back, so it's not like you have just full mass right across the front. Um, I would say the same thing about the vinyl. If you had a chance to do it over, and you could do hardy board or something, um, just for aesthetics. Um, but other than that, I, I don't have any problems.
Did you talk to the Larsons about their concerns?
Um, so, I haven't. Uh, I didn't know Bruce had concerns until, um, like he kind of walked up to me literally like ten seconds before it started and said, "I don't wanna blindside you, but I am gonna object." Um, so before that, I thought everything was fine. I mean, we had seen him, waved, said hi like we always do. Um, and I guess I don't know when he decided he was gonna object, but we had had conversations before that. So, I really didn't know how to take it. I haven't seen him since, so, no, I mean.
Have you lived there for a while, or did you buy this, to do this project?
No, no, we've lived there for six, seven years now.
Okay, so, I'll just tell you what my fundamental concern is. It's that the whole purpose of our guidelines is to avoid exactly what we're confronting right now, where someone builds, uh, and therefore has a massing issue that the neighbors object to. And I completely understand everyone's talking about, well, if you had started from scratch, they'd still be in a pickle. Uh, but my concern is that we're not really respecting the spirit of the new ordinances. If we use the architectural design flexibility to allow you to achieve a result that would otherwise, you know, be not acceptable to your neighbors. So, what I'm thinking of right now is how much integrity truly do the architectural details have that would allow us to add that two hundred and fifty square feet? To even get into the realm of discussing this in a way that, uh, uh, would allow me to feel good voting for you. So, let me ask Hank some questions. Hank, in your opinion, well, first of all, could you list again, and I know you've done it, what the architectural details that have been added are?
I think he has the siding, the piece, I actually did it in the middle, but he has, um, mutton bars, trim boards, uh, reference of the bracketing, siding pattern changes. Uh, so he's got over three details, assuming that you accept that. So, what I might suggest for proceedings is to first have a vote on the planning commission to see if every, if, if that passes. If they get the two fifty, then it becomes a secondary issue to the twenty-six feet, which you can approve subject to ZBA. So, the first order of business in my mind would be to establish whether or not the planning commission by vote accepts the two hundred and fifty square foot additional.
But before we get there though, do you think that the front gable, if you wanna call it that, is?
It's clearly an architectural issue.
Is it something that we contemplated when we, I'm not saying that, when, when we discuss these ordinances, this type of architectural detail, it strikes me as, not a detail, it strikes me as a defining characteristic of the house, which is not what I really thought of as an architectural detail. And so, I mean, I look at that as, um, I mean, I look at that as house-defining, as opposed to an architectural detail. Maybe there's some ambiguity here.
Well, uh, let, let me give you a little bit of history that, that may help with this. There's a few houses, and I do mean a few houses in Huntington Woods, that have a garage that projects forward like that. Based on the construction of those houses, the planning commission years and years ago had gone through and decided that the garage can no longer be any further forward than the front door of the house, and the front facade of the house was what it evolved to. The reason for that was, was to keep things in line and not project the garage as a character-defining feature. There are, having said that, there are, however, houses in Huntington Woods that already have that feature. For example, if you drive down Huntington, Mr. Morgan has another house like that. So, these houses, by virtue of having this garage already there, are in some respects limited to what they can do by virtue of the footprint and the foundation. He could have chosen to bring the entire front of the house up to the line. He could have chosen to try to go back, but the bill to him with his existing floor plan, and stop me if I'm in. He could have chosen to try to go back, but the bill to him with his existing floor plan, and stop me if I'm incorrect, is such that it's more conducive to his flow of the second floor if he comes out over the garage and uses that as his master. So, to make no mistake about it, there, th- these houses were a reason that that ordinance was changed so that the garage would not come further forward in the house because they wanted to look at fronts of houses and not fronts of garages. Having said that, Mr. Morgan already has that. The garage is already there. So, at that point, you need to take into consideration in your own mind before you vote, whether or not, that's already a character-defining feature. So if there was a second floor above it, are you enhancing, changing, whatever? Are you adding to where your eye's gonna go to that any more than it already does? That's up to you as a planning commission. You have to decide where that makes to you. Again, what I would suggest is, is that everybody makes their decision as to the gable front, uh, the roof with the bracketing, the additional sc- uh, scallop siding for the front, uh, the mutton bars and those, whether those are enough character-defining architectural features to qualify them for the two-hundred-and-fifty-square-feet. The issue then becomes whether or not, A, you let him go for a variance for two-hundred-and-seventy-six square feet and approve the project. B, you accept that those are architectural characteristics and let him go to the zoning board of appeals for twenty-six square feet variance. Or you deny the project based on whatever it is that you would find that would be sufficient cause to deny the project. And those would really be what your choices are.
Thank you. Why, uh, are you using vinyl?
Uh, just, it's what is there.
It's what is there, but you, you're not, um, do you consider, as Mike suggested, using a better material in light of what you're doing?
Um, we hadn't planned on replacing the vinyl. It's in good condition. Um, so it wasn't like we were, we were like, oh, can we replace, I mean, we acknowledge hardy is nicer than vinyl. Um, I mean, I can look at the price of it if it's, you know, a deciding feature, um, but it seems that.
When you say it's, it's what's there on the old house, but you're, you're, you're using, you know, vinyl on the new addition as well, particularly, correct?
Yeah, I mean, I guess we could put hardy on that part.
Are you changing the vinyl on the existing house?
Yep.
You're not?
But you're putting trim boards, you're putting, you're putting trim boards at the corners?
Yeah, we're gonna add some features to make it pop a little bit.
So we're just gonna trim those off and put a?
Well, yeah, they're just caps, you know, they're, they're like vinyl caps. I don't know if you've ever seen them on, on the corners? So you just take them out and you put in a, kind of like a, a feature that, you see it around the neighborhood. If you, if you drive around, you'll notice that there's, instead of being like the individual vinyl caps, you know, stacked in each other, you just see a single piece that goes down.
Okay.
Will you ref- I'm sorry.
No, you're okay.
Would you reference, uh, the siding pattern changes? Is that just the, um, the vinyl shake?
That's correct.
Okay. I wanna make sure I didn't miss anything else.
So.
Andy?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'll, I'll get back to, go ahead.
No, go.
I was, I wanted to understand the point you were making about being in the spirit of the changes.
Mm-hmm.
That threw me a little bit, so I mean, I, I, I appreciate that every neighbor may have a unique concern, but I'm struggling with the fact that he's building under twenty-six feet. You know, I mean, architectural details aside, ignoring that, but he, I mean, he's building underneath twenty-six feet and he's building at the same depth as the neighbor's house. I'm not sure how, how, how his proposal is, is violating the spirit of that.
That, here, here, I'm not saying it is.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm, look, we're working with these for frankly, the first time, the new ordinances. And I apologize if I feel like beginning pig.
Sorry about that.
But, uh, you know, when I, in my mind, contemplated architectural detail, uh, that was something that would incentivize us to add square footage, notwithstanding, uh, massing concerns. Our whole purpose, I thought, in developing the ordinances they're currently drafted was to minimize the likelihood that neighbors would be assaulted by additions or new, uh, houses that seem overwhelming or have massing problems.
Sure.
And what I see is they're using an architectural detail as not something that mitigates the massing problem. I see the architectural detail in this case, the front gable, if you wanna call it that, as something that exacerbates the massing problem. And therefore, I think it's inconsistent with the spirit that the architectural details are supposed to make us feel better about, um, the massing issue. This is making me feel worse.
Oh, I understand. So, so your, your aesthetic of the gable makes it appear more massive than some other potential design for adding to the top of the garage?
And so I'm reluctant to use this as a architectural detail, cause it's like bootstrapping one thing onto the other and you're kind of double dipping, if you will. You're getting, you know, architectural detail, but it's contributing to the massing as opposed to mitigating the effects of the massing. And so.
I was trying to imagine just a large, flat wall there.
Well, but, no, but, wait a second, wait a second. The, but, but the alternative would be to keep the house size down, um, to where, closer to where it is and not create this problem. The alternative is to respect, I think, the spirit of the, uh, ordinances, which, you know, basically says, you know, we're okay with smaller houses to prevent massing. And if we're gonna go beyond, uh, what the limits and square footage are, we have to have a justification for doing it and that architectural detail will get us there. I don't think that could be done.
So, I looked at it the opposite way. I looked at it as if he was walking in with a, making as plain a box as possible to get to twenty-five hundred square feet. And are they adding architectural content to that plain box in order to make it look less massive? So in the sense of, if he had a plain box, is it less massive than that? And that's where I think, okay, there's been architectural detail added to the addition to make it appear less massive than if it was a plain box.
Or if they had a gable without the appearance of, of the shed dormers on either side, it wouldn't appear massive at all because it would just be twenty-five hundred square feet.
Yeah, normal.
Uh, Sheldon?
Yeah.
I see your point.
I'm gonna concur with Aaron. I, I disagree that this is a violation of the spirit.
I'm not saying it is.
Well, you're being.
I'm raising the issue in my mind.
You're being, you're, you're mugwamping it, you know?
Yeah, yes, I am.
Okay.
I don't know what that means.
I don't know what that means either, but I'm wamping.
I mean, you just, you know, you're saying it and then you're not saying it. And, and I, and, and you're nevertheless throwing it out on the table.
Yeah.
And, and I, I disagree that it is a, I, I think there's an architectural detail that breaks up the massing and that's, that's the intent behind the, behind the ordinance is to, is to break it up a little bit so it isn't just a plain wall. And, and I think that's been accomplished here. And I think it's, it's exactly the kind of thing that would justify the, um, the extra footage and justify the extra, by the way, I, just a, a, a procedural detail, I don't know if David had an opportunity to comment?
I'll take your participating, 'cause I'm walking late.
Okay.
I don't know what the rule is on that.
You're more.
You could certainly participate.
Yeah.
And in fact, realistically, I would encourage participation.
Doesn't mean I wanna hear what you have to say.
The more people that are here that participate to vote, um, the, the more that it can reflect on the vote.
Before David participates?
Yeah.
Um, I, I, I know that Martha had some thoughts in response to Sheldon's.
Well, I, I think mass is mass and it doesn't matter if it's got a big triangle in it and it's divided up. I mean, bottom line is, that's just a facade and it's still massive. Um, what would not be massive if it were a gable roof, um, without the dormer style. Uh, from the side view, we can see exactly what it is. It's, it's large. And, um, and personally, I think it is not in the spirit of a colonial. I think it, we're starting to look a little bit like a cedar shake house instead of, um, a colonial with the way it's divided up. And that's just, you know, my sense of architectural design.
David?
I actually had the same concerns that I think is probably brought up by a lot of people, but I walked into hearing the discussion about how this is now flat with the neighbor's house and would be the same, um, spot that the neighbors would have of a new house were there. And I'm, like, it's significant to me, but I still agree, I think this is going to be massive. And I have a very tough time picturing this in my head still, wrapping my mind around it.
So if I could make a comment, I mean, if you were looking to buy a house and you saw that your neighbor's house was two stories tall and next to your house, you wouldn't go, well, I'm not buying this house, there's a massive house next to it. It's, you know, in my mind, it seems that it's fairly consistent with other houses out there. I mean, it was one of the things that we looked at, like, we didn't wanna build a house that was gonna stick out compared to the neighbors. That's why we think the fact that it's, you know, set level, um, with the front of all the other houses in the neighborhood, or will be. Um, you know, it will bring more, it'll bring, you know, you see the garage in the front. I, I can't deny that that is there, it's what draws your eye, but by adding the stuff above it, you know, in our opinion, we feel like that's an improvement to the house of where your eye is drawn. Like, now you're gonna go and you're gonna see the garage door and then you go, oh, that looks nice, instead of, oh, there's a garage door. Right? So, like, in the end, it kind of, you know, what, you know, Hank was saying, that the idea was they didn't want houses where the garage went out further than the front of the house. Well, this kind of reverses that. It brings the front of the house out to the garage door. So, yeah.
I'm not buying that one.
I, I have a question for Hank also.
Yes.
If we decided that the, uh, extra two-fifty was not there, um, but we nevertheless approved it to go seek the variance, can the ZBA reconsider that?
No, here's what, here's what would happen. If you approve it, subject to the zoning board of appeals granting a two-hundred-and-seventy-six square foot variance, um, which is one of the options that you have, then he would have to prove his case to the zoning board of appeals. If he would choose to bring that up as part of his case to the zoning board of appeals, then yeah, he certainly could do that and say, look, these are this, this is this, this is this. They're not gonna overturn the planning commission's finding as to whether or not they're just gonna either grant him the two-hundred-and-seventy-six square foot variance or they're not. And that, that's typically where that would go.
Twenty-six.
So, it's.
Same thing is true in twenty-six feet.
Exactly, exactly. They still need, so whatever you do, if you approve it, would be subject to approval of a variance by the zoning board of appeals. Now, that's not wrong to do that because, one, you're gonna need a variance either way and you're leaving him to his cruise with the zoning board of appeals. And two, the zoning board of appeals, the planning commission cannot act as a zoning board of appeals and deny him a variance. You either find, that's why I'm suggesting that you, you vote and you find whether or not the two-hundred-and-fifty qualifies as a character or not. And then you can go ahead and say, well, we would approve this subject to the granting of a twenty-six foot variance or a two-hundred-and-seventy-six foot variance. And then the zoning board of appeals would then, first off, I would then know what I have to advertise for the zoning board of appeals. And then they would be able to make the determination based on what his practical difficulties or hardship would be. One of which I'm certain would be the existing configuration of the house on the lot.
Did, did you try and shave off that extra twenty-six square feet?
Um, we did think about it. The only issue is, the only place we could really pull it back from is the, well, there was two ways we could do it. We, we could pull back from the, that master bedroom, but if you look at the dimensions, it's already longer than it is wide. And pulling back any further, kind of, you end up with a very long, narrow room that you can't, like, the, and I, we, Hank actually talked about this. Right now, the width is nightstands and a king-size bed. Like, that's it. Like, there is no more extra, and we were very, like, specific about, okay, we just wanna make sure we fit this and we won't go anymore. Like, we could actually have come out a little bit more. Um, and the other thing we do is, we have that, that downstairs space, like, that we're bringing. It's already part of the natural footprint, but we're gonna make it living space. And we could, I think, negate that, I mean, but that doesn't really change the look of the house. That's all internal stuff, but I think.
See, you're, you're, what you're doing candidly, and the reason why I'm so uncomfortable, is you're asking us to, like, leap over two hurdles. The first hurdle is the two-fifty and then the next hurdle is the twenty-six. If I don't look as ministerial, uh, I don't, I don't think we regularly, as I said last month, uh, typically punt, uh, size issues to the ZBA. Uh, we very rarely confront them. Um, okay, does anyone have any other comments, uh, or questions?
I, I have another question. Are you replacing all the current windows in the house?
No.
So, do the current windows currently have mutton bars?
Yes.
So, it's not an architectural detail that you're adding? It's something that's already there?
Okay.
I, I'm, I, because you're, you're, you're bringing that forth as being one of the architectural details that you're using as a means to gain the extra square footage, but it's already there. So it's not an architectural detail that you're adding?
I suppose I agree. I mean, it depends on how you interpret the spirit of it. I think.
I interpret the spirit of it as when you're designing, you're adding architectural detail, but you're not adding that architectural detail. It's actually already there. You're trying to double dip. That, that's just, I just, I wanna.
We didn't really think about it like that, but.
Yeah, I, I, I kind of do.
Fair? I mean, I, no, no, I agree that the existing windows have mutton bars, right? The new window, so does the new window.
Is just matching the rest of the house. I, I guess I just, I just.
Is that, but that's not a negative on him.
I, I'm just, go ahead.
For clarification, and I'll just give you how I interpreted it when I looked at it. I interpret this as the part that they are adding complies with the requirements. Therefore, I did determine in my estimation, when I calculated this, that adding the mutton bars to the new portion did comply with the intent of the ordinance. That's how I interpreted it.
And that's fine. And, and I will say that, that though I, I do believe that you are trying to comply with the spirit of adding the architectural details, I'm bothered by the fact that beyond that, you want us to approve an extra amount of square footage that you haven't tried to take out. You said you discussed it, but you haven't tried to take it out. That you want us to approve that extra two-hundred-and-fifty square feet and beyond.
I mean, we tried to pull that room back as far as we could to still make it.
It's twenty-six square feet.
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, it's.
I mean, meaning, I, I mean, I, I, I'm not great at spatial relations, but that's not a lot of square feet.
No, it's not.
And i- i- it's like you're asking us to take two big gulps and I just don't feel right about it. Anyway, do people wanna take a vote whether the two-fifty square feet is there or not? Like, pursuant to Hank's suggestions?
Yeah, so move.
Okay, so, do you wanna make a motion?
I would like to move that we approve the determina- that we make a determination with respect to the plans that have been presented that, um, they qualify for the extra two-hundred-and-five bonus.
Is there a second? Okay, any discussion on that? And we should open this up to the public, uh, if anyone wants to comment on it, which I haven't done yet. Anyone? Okay, public expression closed. Any discussion amongst the, uh, commission about the motion that's on the table? The motion is to basically agree that these plans comply with the, um,
Justify the extra.
Justify the extra two-hundred-and-fifty square feet. Bonus. Any discussion?
So we're not approving the plans, we're just?
This is just to get to two-fifty.
Just the two-fifty, okay.
Okay?
Great.
Although, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of Sheldon's motion, say aye.
Aye.
One, two, three, four. All those opposed, one, two, three, four. So, that motion fails.
Can I ask a question now?
Yeah.
So, because that fails, is that set of precedence that if you're adding an architectural detail that already exists on the house, that cannot count? So, like, if you have shutters, you can't use shutters. If you have mutton, you can't use mutton.
That's certainly not the intent of the motion.
No, that wasn't the intent of that.
Okay.
There, 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 there's some discretion. I think what you're confronting here is, this is the one area of the ordinance that gives this planning commission some meaningful discretion as to whether you've earned, uh, the two-hundred-and-fifty square feet. And for the reasons that have been stated, there's a belief among four of us at least that that has not been earned as, uh, to, to justify that two-hundred-and-fifty additional square feet.
Okay.
Um.
Which means you've gotta, if, if the plan gets approved, you've gotta go to the ZBA with the full two-hundred-and-seventy-six and ask them to approve the entire two-seventy-six as opposed to twenty-six, whether that's a greater hurdle or lesser hurdle, like.
And I'll just state for the record that, um, and, and this almost can get philosophical because I understand Aaron's perspective. Uh, but I haven't thought of architectural detail as a vehicle that contributes to complaints that the house is too massive. And notwithstanding what Aaron said, which I totally get, it could be a, a flat wall. Uh, I still think that. I still think that it's not at least consistent with what I believe, I personally believe in my mind, was the intent of that provision that allows for extra square footage based on architectural detailing. And that might be something we have to work on, but...
Can we have a minute to discuss?
Yeah.
Again, I'm very sorry, you're a guinea pig. Right, but, back to that point, so what I struggle with is, when we sat in this room and came up with these rules, we went back again and again and again to the 2,500-square-foot colonial box that, I could name the builder, keeps building, right? He said, we don't want an unlimited number of 2,500-square-foot brick boxes in the middle of the city. And so, we decided to, decided on this, this structure as a way to say, let's modify those, let's force those boxes to be modified in such a way that they are less massive.
I understand.
And so that's just why I struggle with things, like, I start with, if they showed up with a box, right, and then they did something to that box to make that box less massive, that's where I really feel like they're complying with the intent.
And I totally respect that, the problem is, this is that unique situation where we have a garage jutting out, they're adding on to it. It's an unusual situation to begin with, as we all know. We've got a letter from a neighbor saying, no, this is adding to a massing problem, it's something that's gonna affect our enjoyment of the property. In this specific, hopefully non-presidential situation, I think that, fairly applied, I feel comfortable saying, I don't feel comfortable giving the 250.
Can we talk about the letter, though? No disrespect, I appreciate change in these situations, it's difficult, and changes to views is difficult. But honest to God, I mean, you look at these houses, and they're front to front, right? I mean, I looked it up in Google Maps, I drove by, the front of that garage is on the exact same plane as the front of the neighbor's house. That's like saying to my neighbor, hey, you've gotta keep your ranch, 'cause I like seeing over the top of your roof. I don't think that's a fair standard to apply to anybody.
But I think you're not comparing, you're comparing apples to oranges here.
Why?
The front of the neighbor's house has fenestration, it's got design, it's an archi, cohesive architectural design. You've got a garage that now has, I don't know, sprinkles on the top, and it doesn't go with the original design of the house.
Yeah, but we're talking about looking sideways.
So now you're compounding the problem of, of the garage being the focal point of the house.
But we're talking about, we're talking about a neighbor looking, looking to their side, not looking at the front of this house, and saying, I don't like the fact that I can't see over their first-story roof anymore.
But that's not my driving style.
So, I'm less worried about the neighbor, and more worried about the fact that the architectural foot, the bonuses is given based on two corbels and a little bit of, and a little bit of vinyl shake at the top. And, and I'm not excited about, well, we're just gonna take some vinyl trim pieces and throw them on stuff that's already there. That kinda threw me as well. I, I do believe that the massing is still there, but I guess what concerns me is that there wasn't a really big effort to try and pull it back a little bit, at least into that 250-square-foot bonus. Like, I, the fact that it's even beyond the 250-square-foot, I kinda feel like, well, I've tried to give you some, you've tried to give us some architectural detail, and you haven't done bad, and, and I don't think it's an unattractive thing, but I do think that's still pretty big. I think you don't have anything gorgeous to work with to start with, to be perfectly honest, with the garage out in the front there. So I think you're handicapped to begin with. But, I wanted to see you try, it's 26 square feet is not that much, I wanted to see you try and pull it back with, within the bonuses that you were trying to get.
Sheldon?
Andy?
Hi.
With all due respect to the variance of opinions here on the panel, okay, we're not giving this guy any guidance about what would be approved or wouldn't be approved, we've got a set of plans in front of us. And I think we oughta approve them, disapprove them, but I don't think we're giving, we're expressing individual opinions, and obviously, there's a, there's a difference in opinion, you know, at least three or four of them sitting on the panel. But I don't think we're giving him any path to follow that says we would, and we don't have to, I'm not talking about redesigning his house for him, or anything like that. But I think we're a little bit all over the map.
Well, maybe we are, but for me, for me, the fact that you have to have essentially two variances or quasi-variances, one to get to the 250, and one to get to the additional 26, just makes me feel like it's a bridge too far for me to feel comfortable voting for it. If I were to give a path, it would be, don't make a swallow hard twice. Make a swallow hard once, in order, you know, if you're gonna, if you're gonna push the envelope, push it once, not twice.
So, I just had a question, I guess this is Frank. Remember, we had talked about getting, so we're not doing that first-floor back room, right? We had talked, I said it's out of budget right now, so we're, you know...
Well, I understood that it was back in, 'cause it came in on the last set of plans.
No, no, it's still out of budget, but you had said leave it, if it gets approved, I can do it in the future.
That was a three-season room, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So it's not heated?
No.
So it wouldn't count as livable square feet?
Correct.
It's lock coverage?
Yeah, it's lock coverage, but it's not livable, yeah.
Yeah, but you are under.
Okay, so if I pulled that out, and then I had another thought, because when we had talked before, I wasn't eligible for the 100-square-foot setback bonus, 'cause it didn't apply to the new part of the house. But if, if we take the interpretation of the muttons, where the muttons are an architectural feature that already exists, so does my setback, my three, you know, the three-foot on the second floor that is setback from the first floor that goes around the entire existing house right now? Would I be eligible for that square footage then?
Well, you're, it's not on the addition, I mean, the way that I interpreted this was, is it, has it applied to the addition? Not as it applied to the original house, so, what, what you're saying, and I understand...
Does that change now?
I understand exactly what you're saying, is that if we're counting the mutton bars as being an original architectural feature, and we're not getting it for that, then shouldn't you get the three-foot, because it already exists as well? So, one way or another, and the concern that I hear Mr. Morgan expressing is, is that we are interpreting it one way for the mutton bars, and the second way for the three-foot step-in.
I don't know if anybody's interpreting the mutton bars that way or not, I was just asking, did they currently, were you changing the windows out and adding this to the house as a whole? Or was this something that was already there? That was, it was simply a question.
Yeah, and I'm just simply trying to find a way to make it work.
It was simply a question, it wasn't, it wasn't meant to try and say it is or is not part of the detail, it was simply a question.
Yeah.
So, there's an equitable issue going on here, you know, we've used the term guinea pig. And the fact of the matter is, this isn't a unique house. There has been an effort to put in architectural detail, to decrease the massing, and to start from where Aaron starts. And I said, the vote to add it, add the 250, was, it didn't pass. But I personally am prepared to vote for something that would require you to get a 276-square-foot variance from the ZBA, for the simple reason that there is ambiguity right here. And, you know, you can explain it to them, and I'm just not willing to establish the precedent that under these circumstances you get the 250.
So, Mr. Chairman, at this point, having pretty much gone around robbing with this, my suggestion would be, is that if you, there's now two choices. You either send it to the zoning, you approve it subject to the zoning board of appeals with a variance for 276 square feet, which, if they approve, then Mr. Morgan has got his project effectively. All you've really done is say that the 250 square feet didn't count, and as a result, we've now established the variance size for what he will need in order to, to have his projects to be seen through to completion. So the only thing you have left is you can either deny the project, or vote for it.
So does anyone wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the project subject to the granting of a variance by the zoning board, and subject to the correction of the plan to have that window on the first...
And you're talking about a 276 variance, square-foot variance?
Yep, well, the other one, the other question...
Right, I'm just making sure the record's clear, is there a second?
I'll second.
Yeah, and, and I will also comment, that I think we're gonna see this bad. 'Cause I, I don't know that he can establish a hardship, I mean, that's, that's a separate issue. That's based on my own experience with the zoning board, but they do all sorts of things that they probably shouldn't do. But the, but the bottom line is, I think we're gonna see this bad, and I don't think we're, I don't think we've served the homeowner terribly well by this discussion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor of Sheldon's motion, say aye. One, looks like it's eight, seven to one. So you're going to the ZBA with your...
Your approval subject to the zoning board of appeals.
But it's a 276.
Is there a potential to discuss that extra 100 square feet for the three, for the setback, like, is that possibly...
That has to happen here.
Yeah, I know, I know, but that's why I wanna ask the question now, 'cause if I walk away, obviously...
Not, not at this point, no, but they both are already in it, so, if you want to do that, you would have to... I would think you probably want to...
You don't, I've had enough on the front end. Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda, yes, Hank?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to call your attention to say...
Is 26126 Meadowcrest, site plan review for a new house.
Do you want your plans?
Uh, sure.
Thank you.
Is this yours as well?
No, I don't know.
That's not a question. No, Meadowcrest, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience, too, I mean, it wasn't an easy one.
Sorry, wasn't gonna let front for us either.
Okay.
This is our chair down there, right? This is, this is the pink house.
No, would you like to go?
It used to be the pink house.
You're up. Yeah.
Hi?
Hello.
I'm Michael Healy, and I would like to move into your city. That was an excitement that I have not yet cherished in my local community, and that was fun. Hope mine goes a little bit smoother, but, we started looking last spring, and we're kinda looking at Hurndale, and we're looking, never really drove through here, and ended up driving through one Sunday, and we didn't look anywhere else after that. And the funny thing, when I drove through, I pulled to the stop sign on the corner of Meadowcrest and Nadine there, and I looked at the house, I'm like, I bet you that'll be for sale someday. And sure enough, about five months, six months later it was, and we end up purchasing it, and demoed it last fall, and wanted to build a house that fit in with the neighborhood, and have a wife and a five-year-old son, and we wanna live here for a long time. So, my architect was supposed to be here, and is not, so I'll do my best to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hank?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll try to do, kind of, the double duty enact is what the architect might give up here, if you have this ability as well. The house that was originally there was a Bauhaus-influenced architecture that was very unique. The house was in a complete state of disrepair, so when it was demolished, there was really no saving that house. So having said that, Mr. Healy came in with a plan before that wasn't quite meeting what the planning commission would accept, as far as that, through no fault of his own. It was a size issue, and it was substantive, okay? Mr. Healy, of his own volition, pulled it, and that's when we asked for the table last month, pulled it off the, off the docket so that he could revise it with the intent of meeting all the criteria of the planning commission. And as a result, those are the plans that you see here before you deceive them. There was never a minute's discussion about trying to go for the bigger house, he wanted to fit into the neighborhood. Having said that, when you take a look at what the plans are for this, you have a house that complies with the height, complies with the setbacks, all of them, complies with the lock coverage, and also picks up a substantial amount of properties. So you have 2,950 square feet, including all bonuses. He has a, which he is under at 2,846. His base, he gets a lock bonus because he is substantially larger than that most sizes, 88 feet wide. So he complies with virtually everything. When you go to the character bonus section, which this is a lot easier to determine on this particular house, he meets the roof height bonus. He actually meets the second-floor step-in bonus, if you take a look around it. He takes the fenestration, and he probably has posted 30%, with 20% compensation. And he also does not have the detached garage, so he does not pick up that bonus. Architectural bonus, he pretty well hits them all. So, and, you know, to eliminate some of the concerns that perhaps the previous one had, these are architectural details that would be more consistent with the house in general. So, basically, we take a look at a house, now that if you take a look at all four elevations, has consistent detailing on all four sides. It meets the size requirements, it meets material diversity, if you take a look, he's got some siding, he's got brick, he's got stone, so the use of materials is substantive. And he's got windows, the windows all use a mutton bar pattern, so it looks good. He also has garage doors that you're looking at, the garage doors also have fenestration in the garage doors, which also brings attention and balance to the front facade. And he's even gone and detailed the chimney, which is now highly articulated, if you take a look at the plan. So, I actually, these, these plans have all the details, including the lanai porch at the back, which is a nice feature, well within the setbacks. He's using wood windows that are clad. So I actually found this to be a very refreshing project.
Thank you. Anything else?
I do not, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have that the architect would have answered while he was here.
Thank you, Allison?
I really don't have any questions, I think it looks amazing, there's a lot of, I like the use of the different materials, so I have, I have questions.
Thank you. Sheldon?
Yeah, I live on the other side of Nadine, closer to Wyoming. And I, and I watched the, the pink house turn to rubble, and that's why people are still living there. I mean, it was, it was apparent that they just didn't have the resource to maximize what that house could have been. And we had seen a prior set of plans here that was in the same nature, but that project couldn't go forward. I am very pleased to look at the, at the kind of effort and detail that you put into the house, appreciate your willingness to invest in the community. I have, there is one question I have. I have one question on the second floor, east elevation, which would be the one facing your neighborhood. I see on the second floor, unless I'm wrong, this is, on the east elevation on the second floor, there appears to be... You know, you've managed to put brick everywhere else, I'm just curious why there's hardened siding. And I think that's, is that the only place that's on the plan? It's on the second floor, east elevation?
It's on the second floor, and you also have it on... It was on the second floor, and you also have it on the south elevation, and a little bit on the north elevation. Basically, what you do is they're breaking up some of the architectural details to reduce the mass.
Okay, all right, then I'm, I'm satisfied with that. I, I've, I've got nothing negative at all to say about this plan. I appreciate the detail and the materials and the amount of attention that went into putting this together and to comply and putting yourself well within the, um, the guidelines that we have and the ordinances that were required to follow and the three hundred and sixty-degree treatment and all the rest of that stuff. Appreciate it very much. You'll probably be a miserable neighbor, but that's okay. The house will be...
Mike?
Um, this is a great follow-up to a discussion about architectural detail. This is architectural detail.
This is fantastic. Um, I love it. Uh, I loved the pink house. I really loved it, and I was sad to see it go.
Uh, so thank you for building something, uh, good there. Um, one question strictly out of curiosity. Why did you demolish that house before coming to us, as opposed to coming to us with a teardown project?
Um, I followed the lead with Hank. Um, when I bought it, I met a lot of the neighbors, and their number-one concern was that house being torn down. Uh, I had no problem doing it. Um, and my thought pa, pattern was I asked the process, and, um, I got with my builder and, and followed everything we needed to follow. I wanted to have it down before fall. Actually, I promised the next-door neighbors by Christmas it was gonna be their Christmas present. And, uh, it was like four days before Christmas, finally, 'cause, uh, the consumers took so long. But I just, I didn't, I don't, I wanted to get it down. I wanted it to be fresh and clean and gone, and then take the winter to design the house and get approved. That was my thought process. I had never done this before.
Thanks. Thank you. Mike, that's beautiful. Can we see it?
Um, I think that, I, I agree, Mike, that it, it really does meet the architectural details, that there's going to be, it's quite a beautiful house built. I love all the windows. I like the changes in materials. I like the stonework over the garage doors, actually particularly. Um, and I really appreciate, uh, the chimney, actually. The detail on the chimney, I find to be really quite nice. Um, thank you for keeping it within, uh, the range and not overbuilding a lot.
Ditto. Uh, I, I really appreciate your design. Um, your attention to detail is, is lovely and refreshing. And, um, I agree with Jill, thank you for not overbuilding the lot.
I agree with everyone. I, I think this is a good use of, I mean, this is what we envisioned when we came up with the bonuses and it encourages good design and having looked at the last house, I think this actually is what we all thought we would get more of. So, hopefully, it's a sign of things to come, but...
Aaron?
I can't add anything. It's, thank you for your best man.
The only thing I'll add is that you two are a guinea pig, and, you know, this is the first time, really, we've applied these. And the contrast between what we saw just before and yours is obviously night and day in terms of the natural fit and the compliance with, uh, the ordinance and the entitlement to these, uh, bonus points that, that, that you're getting, without any doubt whatsoever in anyone's mind, which I think should give us all some confidence that we're on the right track, even though we just had a bumpy ride, uh, with that last house. Uh, I think it's an amazing design, and it shows, as I think, uh, David said, that these ordinances are properly well drafted and will serve their intended purpose, so thank you, and I look forward to voting for it. Anyone, um, want, wanna, wanna make a motion?
Motion to approve, sorry, as presented.
Yep, it's fine.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Unanimous. Thank you. What are you, when are you starting?
Welcome to the neighborhood. Yes.
Next month, I think.
Yeah?
Soon as possible. We're kinda, we're a month behind, uh, for some issues we had last month, uh, with, um, the size, by mistake, so... Um, I don't know where to go from this, it's my first time, so I think my builder's ready to go, um, and we're just gonna follow their lead on...
And where, where are you coming from?
Uh, Troy, South Troy.
Well, welcome to the neighborhood.
Troy, it's not Troy School District.
I think we're all excited to have you as an, as a neighbor. So, uh, I can't speak for everyone, but I, I think this will be great.
Okay, and if you don't, I, if you don't mind, I forgot, I, I got something for everyone in the car. I gave one to Hank, I'm gonna go grab it. I don't wanna interrupt you, and I'd be great to come back, though.
Yeah, we, we have one more thing of business, so you have time to do that.
Here are your plans.
Thank you. Thank you. It makes me feel better about leaving now, because I can't...
Mr. Chairman, the last order of business, uh, for tonight was, uh, ZBA liaison.
Yeah, you wanna just contextualize that for everyone?
Yeah, uh, if you wouldn't mind. Uh, originally, it was, I had understood that it was Mike, but it wasn't Mike, it was Aaron. And, uh, Aaron had subsequently said, well, he was, after thinking about it, and I remember there was no mad rush to do this from the planning commission. So, uh, Aaron, my instructor, him on, but had some constraints that would not allow him to vote the time to it. And Mike has actually said that he would accept the position. But that's gonna require Aaron to say he didn't want to have it, and Michael to be actually put up for a vote and appoint.
Aaron, does anyone have a gun to your head to get you off the zoning board of appeals? Or does this have your own choice?
Mike did threaten me, but...
This is your own choice, you're doing this voluntarily.
I'm doing this voluntarily.
Bullying a strong word.
Yeah, and you are suing this not under duress, correct?
Wow, you're a brave soul.
Okay, so what's our motion? Our motion is to what, Hank?
Your motion would be to appoint Michael Wright as the zoning board of appeals liaison for the two thousand and eighteen year.
Okay, that motion to appoint Michael as the liaison to the ZBA for the two thousand and eighteen.
So moved.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Uh, public participation? Mr. Healy?
Um, I, I saved a lot of stuff from the old house.
Oh.
To try to incorporate it, so I, I water jet these at work, it's got the dates on the back.
Oh, how cool.
So, it's the old pink house.
Little pink.
Oh, my God. Oh, thank you.
My, my five-year-old called it the Pink Panther, so I took a bunch of the science.
Oh, I love it.
Then bolted it together and then cut out a Pink Panther.
Okay, I wanna know what you do, that you have a water jet machine?
Uh, manufacturing, machining, water jet, welding.
We need to talk.
I got all sorts of stuff from the old, all, a lot of the...
How do you feel about robotics? We need to talk.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you very much. Looking forward to the house, and your, your presence in it. Second? All those in favor? Aye. Motion's, I mean, meetings adjourned. See you next month.